You were on the board then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was in on the board, right?
Yeah.
She's been there 25 years. I've been in office.
Yeah.
Yeah.
She was there.
We were over at the courthouse then.
That's right.
You remember that?
She was over there.
Yeah.
Fight for.
Yeah.
Good evening. Welcome to each one of you. We're delighted to have with us Joe East, John East Moore, Reverend from D.B. Chapel. If you would like to come up to the front, she's going to be kind enough to give the invocation.
She's a ram in the bush.
Thank you. Let us pray. I'll be honest, we bow our heads to you. We just thank you for this opportunity that we, the citizens of Beaufort County, have been called here to this place. We pray for the officials that are leading us tonight. We pray for the guidance that they would need in order to do the work that you called them to do. We pray for every citizen representing him and those that are at large. We need you, O God, to guide us and to show us the way. Because, God, as we represent the people of Beaufort County, we want to represent you as well. So we ask that your presence be felt in this meeting, that everything be done, be done decently and in order, but most of all, that we believe him knowing that we have done something for the good of the people of this county. In Jesus' name we pray. Let us also amen.
Amen. Thank you very much.
She's a keeper.
Yep.
I have connections.
It's nice when you can pull somebody out of that audience. We appreciate that. At this time, I'll call the August meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order, and I'll ask that you stand, and Commissioner Richardson is going to lead in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, I'll ask if anyone has a conflict of interest, any of the agenda items. Hearing none, seeing none, we'll move to the next item, which is the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of the approval of the agenda, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Let me remind you, please turn this vibrator completely off. At this time, we've got items for presentation. The first one is the Child Support Awareness Month proclamation. Tammy, welcome.
I'd say thank you all for allowing me to be here again today. It's my honor to be here each August. A little history about Child Support Awareness Month. In 1995, President Clinton proclaimed August as Child Support Awareness Month. Twenty-eight years later, we still recognize Child Support Awareness Month in August. Child Support Awareness Month is a great opportunity to ensure programs are in place and ready to assist in this critical area of need for all families. We know that support means more than just money. It includes advice, care, and love. We're thankful for those parents doing their part, and we are thankful to the Commissioners of Beaufort County, North Carolina, for the proclamation recognizing August as Child Support Awareness Month. I'd like to read the proclamation now. Whereas Beaufort County is recognizing August as Child Support Awareness Month and reaffirms its commitment to strengthening Beaufort County's families by providing child support services to improve the economic ability and well-being of children. And whereas in state fiscal year 2022, 2023, more than 3.9 million in child support was collected for parents of Beaufort County's children. And whereas there are nearly 2,423 child support orders in place, working to ensure that more than 2,701 children receive financial support from their parents. And whereas the court must order either parent to obtain and maintain health insurance coverage for child if it's actually and currently available to that parent at a reasonable cost. Whereas Child Support Awareness Month salutes the diligent working parents who spend time with their child and who make regular child support payments to safeguard their children's future. And whereas strengthening individuals and families promotes the safety and well-being of children, provides stability, improves the lives of children, and provides opportunities for families to be able to enhance their children's future. Whereas children who do not receive adequate financial and emotional support from their parents may experience greater difficulty in becoming healthy, happy, and productive citizens. And whereas many concerned and dedicated judges, district attorneys, clerks of courts, sheriff's personnel, and child support professionals work to establish and enforce child support orders for Beaufort County children, one of our county's most vital resources. Now therefore, we, the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim August 2023 as Child Support Awareness Month in Beaufort County and commend its observance to all citizens.
Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to approve the, okay, proclamation.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you very much. The next item for presentation is the service awards presentation, and Brian's going to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The human resources director was not feeling well this afternoon, so I'm going to take that on for her. Couple of employees that we'd like to recognize. The first employee, unfortunately, is not able to be here tonight, but it's Ann Harrison, who served the county in the Health Department for 15 years. So. So I want to thank her for her dedicated service and commitment to the county. And then our second employee that obviously this board is very familiar with and has worked greatly with for the last 25 years, Ms. Kelly Hopkins with Elections.
We have no one registered for the public comments, and I do not see either one of our legislators here. So we're down to items for consent. Is any item, or does anyone wish to remove an item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the items for consent.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed. Okay, we're down to public hearing, and we have three individual public hearings now. And Joshua, I guess, is going to cover all three of those. Need a motion to go into the, first one is it relates to a name of a road, Alphen Landing. Got a motion, second?
Second.
All those in favor going into the public hearing, raise your right hand. Thank you. Joshua?
All right. The first petition to name a private road was submitted by Kenneth Alphen, and it was to name an existing private drive approximately 50 feet in width. The petition is being submitted due to a pending application for an address for that parcel that is currently being served by the unnamed road. The county's road naming and addressing ordinance currently requires that the road be named in order for the address to be given. The notice of public hearing was sufficiently advertised. An advertisement was posted in the Washington Daily News for two consecutive weeks, on July 26th and August 2nd, and then the notices of public hearing were also published within the Beaufort County courthouse 10 days prior to the day of this hearing. The county's ordinance requires that the applicant submit three proposed road names. Those suggested were Alphen's Landing, Connie's Landing, and Brian's Landing. After comparing with the existing road names in the database, staff has determined that the applicant's first proposed name, Alphen's Landing, does not duplicate any existing road names within Beaufort County, nor does it have any sound alikes, and we recommend approval of that first road name suggestion, Alphen's Landing.
Any questions from Commissioners? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on the petition of the name change? Okay. Entertain a motion to come out of the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Why don't we go ahead and take a motion to approve the name change?
Motion to approve the name change.
And a second.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? If not, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. The next public hearing is on Connie's Landing. I'll entertain a motion to go into the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Have a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Joshua?
The second road name petition is a similar situation with needing an address for one of the parcels that is currently being served by the unnamed road. Again, this is also sufficiently advertised in the same fashion as the prior. The petition for this one was signed by more than one individual, as there are more individuals owning land along this road. The addressing ordinance requires that 75% of the persons owning property which are doing the road sign off on this. The three suggestions for this one were Dusty Creek, Shady Trails, and Dusty Trails. And staff has determined that the applicant's first proposed name for this road, Dusty Creek, does not duplicate any existing road names within Beaufort County, nor do they have any sound alikes, and we recommend approval of that first suggestion, Dusty Creek.
You mean on my paperwork?
Work Dust Creek is the first name. Dusty Creek is the third name.
I see on mine it says Dusty Creek, second Shady Trails, and three Dusty Trails. For the record, Dusty Creek should be the first one, and that was the one that we had recommended approval of.
So it's not dust, it's dusty?
Correct.
Okay.
The shade, Dust Creek.
Yeah, that's like dust.
Okay. Any question from a Commissioner? Hearing none. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to speak on the naming of Dusty Creek? Hearing none, entertain a motion to come out of the public hearing?
So move.
I'll entertain a second.
Second.
All those in favor coming out of the public hearing, raise your right hand. Thank you. Entertain a motion to approve the naming of the road to Dusty Creek.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion. Is there a second? Motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, entertain a vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. And the next item has to be a, that is a public hearing.
Correct.
Correct, okay, public hearing. So entertain a motion to go into the public hearing as it relates to the Ordinance Enforcement Update dash Penalty section.
So move.
Motion. I'll second that. All those in favor going into the public hearing, raise your right hand. Thank you. Joshua?
All right. This one, it is, it's a clip of a few different excerpts from the following development related ordinances that we have, which this bill pertains to. The bill requires that the removal of all criminal penalties are mandatory from the development-related ordinances within the county. This was Senate Bill 300 passed in 2021, and the following excerpts, as you can see, just are headed with the actual ordinance which it pertains to. So this involves the manufactured home and travel trailer park ordinance, and then the article and section number from which it comes from. The solar energy facilities ordinance. And we also have an excerpt at the back, which includes the actual decriminalization portion of the bill which this is pertaining to. And this is just removing the misdemeanor aspect from the following development-related ordinances which the county has. There isn't really much to that in terms of any additional language. It's just more of the removal of the misdemeanors from the current development-related ordinances that we currently have. And staff recommends approval of these changes as they pertain to the individual ordinances
Any questions? Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to speak? Seeing and hearing none, we'll take a vote to, we'll need a motion to come out of the public hearing?
Motion.
And a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Now, need a motion to approve the changes?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is human resources, and I guess, Brian, you're going to do that as it relates to the disability retirement health insurance policy change.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Call your attention to page 94. This is regard to disability retirement and the county pay of health insurance coverage. The way our current, as we were looking back over the personnel policy with some recent things, our current personnel policy does not address adequately the provision of health insurance for those who retire on disability. The state of North Carolina, if you qualify for disability under state of North Carolina retirement plan, it is a fairly liberal retirement plan. Essentially, when they look at, they essentially determine that you are unable to do the job at which you are assigned. It doesn't mean that you couldn't necessarily do something else, but they view that, the medical board reviews that, is do you have the ability to do the current job you're in. So in looking at that, the recommendation based on other agencies that we work with and their policies is that we, is that the board consider amending the personnel policy to read that if you retire on, if you are, if you qualify for retirement under disability for the state of North Carolina under the elders' plan, which is what we're a part of, then the county will pay your health insurance for up to two years while you file for disability, file for social security disability. Because social security disability will pick that up if you are considered disabled. You file for that. Typically, it takes two years for that to go through. What we have found is that without that provision, then you may have an employee where they may be at an age that they can still do other things, but we're paying their health insurance for them until they reach Medicare, which is the way your policy is written. We had a conversation with our HR attorney, along with the county attorney, who both advised us that because this is considered a vested right under case law, then what we, that if you approve this change, what you will need to do is make it effective for any employee that is hired, starting after you make this, after you do this. So anyone prior to your action is still covered under the existing personnel policy, but because it is considered a vested right, it would only apply to people who are newly hired people, starting tomorrow. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about it, but essentially, it says that you'll, the county will continue to pay the health insurance for that employee for two years while they file for social security disability.
And the change does not affect any existing employees? This is just going forward?
That's correct. It is considered a vested right, and as such, it only occur, it only, the change only applies to employees that are hired after tonight, moving forward.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, now we're open for questions, or Brian?
And I apologize, there was one more piece on this that was put in. It's the very last paragraph. It says also that we're going to add to the person, we're recommending that you add to the personnel policy, that someone who retires on disability, who's qualified under state already, who already has state health insurance, that we're saying we're not paying their health insurance, because the state of North Carolina picks up their health insurance. That was just not clear in our policy, and we didn't want to be caught where, you know, it says we may as well. So you'll see that last piece, that the county will not provide hospitalization for employees retiring on elders' disability who have earned the state health benefits through their employment with the state of North Carolina. So we just don't want to have two out there. Sorry about that.
Motion remains.
Yes. Commissioner Booth?
So what you're saying is somebody that's hired after the day, and they own medical disability, and can do the job, say he was a ditch digger, and you can find him something to do in your office, he got to take that job, or we don't pay his insurance. Is that's what you're saying?
No, no, sir, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that the state of North Carolina disability retirement piece is fairly liberal, and it allows, it looks at you doing your individual job. What we're saying is if that person goes out on disability and is deemed disabled, then they would need to then also apply for social security disability benefits. And we would, the county would provide health insurance for them up to two years, because it typically takes two years for that process to go through. And then they, then if they were considered disabled by the social security administration, then they would receive health insurance through Medicare.
That answered your question. Anyone else? Okay. All those in favor of the change in the policy as it relates to the disability retirement health insurance, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Okay, the next item is solid waste. And Christina, and Wes? Good evening.
Can you get both of us today? Both worked on this item a lot, because obviously it's 10 pages, quite a bit of verbiage. On this one, Wes is going to take the lead on the discussion.
All right. So regarding the solid waste ordinance, we have discussed for several months now. First and foremost, I want to point out that what we have done following requests for language about junk vehicles and abandoned mobile homes, we have decided to present this in the form, or take this as in the form of three different ordinances. We feel like with the differences and some of the language, it just is better suited for us to do that, especially when it comes to some of the penalties and everything. So that's a reason why you don't have that as part of your Chapter 52 solid waste ordinance that I'll be talking about mostly tonight. We do have some language for those. Christina will talk about those a little bit, I believe. But just wanted to go through, I hope you've all had a chance to read it. Obviously, most of it you've seen before. Enforcement and penalties was a little bit newer. Hope you all have had a chance to look at that. But what I want to do is just hit some of the highlights. I don't want to sit here and read word for word, and I don't think any of you would like me to do that either. So just in general, some of the definitions that we have included in this document, we're attempting to be very clear about what these terms mean. We've had definitions for words that are in the definitions, and we're to make sure that what we're defining is clear to whoever is reading this document. Trying our best to use simple, everyday language versus things you get from a legislature or somewhere, make it easy for anybody to understand. We've also attempted to make sure that our language concurs with North Carolina Department Environmental Quality language, as well as other Beaufort County ordinances out there. We've gone and reviewed, it's already here, let's, if that definition fits, let's continue to use that definition versus reinventing the wheel for what we're doing here. The next big section would be the annual solid waste fees. What this section does right now is it pretty much describes our current method for assessing and billing these fees. With the revaluation that is currently in process, we do anticipate this section of this ordinance will change once that information is complete. We hated to do something where we got to change it in two years, but with the availability of some additional information that we've been told by the tax assessor that will be involved in the revaluation, we think we'll be able to better come up with a way of assessing these fees appropriately and billing them. So we do anticipate two years, two and a half years, whenever, whatever the date is on that, I can't remember, we will be back with some updated language for this section of this ordinance. We think that what we'll be able to do is we'll be able to have some separate fees for different types of services. So some entities may not take part in some of our services, but they still need to pay for what they have the availability to utilize, where if they can't use a portion of it, they shouldn't have to pay for that. So like I said, a couple of years down the road, we anticipate coming back with that. The next big change is we would like to start licensing, like a privilege license for household solid waste collectors, for those that utilize the county's account at the public services transfer station. This will allow us to regulate the procedures from, and practices of these companies to make sure that they're complying with our regulations for what we're billing for. And then if they're not doing something right, we have the ability to say, your processes are not intact, therefore you can no longer use the county's account. So let's say we find out that John Doe's collection service is out there picking up commercial waste, which hadn't been assessed a solid waste fee, and he's going to the transfer station and saying he's got residential waste, and it's being billed back to those who are paying the annual solid waste fee. That would then give us the right, so we've inspected it, we found this to be commercial waste, you can therefore no longer continue to use county's account. So that would be a new process under this ordinance. Obviously, it goes into much more detail than what I just did, but for the sake of time, we won't delve too far in. There are a couple of items in that section that we would like some direct feedback, and would request that tonight, or email, or something. One, we have a clause in there, page nine. And a lot of this is language we found in other ordinances that we think would be a good fit, and it may not be if that's what you all determine. Licensed household solid waste collectors shall remove garbage or refuse from the premises of their current customers we currently have in there at least once a week. If that is something that you wish to keep in that ordinance, we would like for you all to have input on that final frequency. Is at least once a week appropriate? Is it not appropriate to have it in there at all, or thoughts on that? If I have a comment on that?
Yes, sir. Mr. Richardson?
I think it's appropriate to have it in there. I have a problem with premises, because where is the pickup point? Because we've gone through this back and forth, they're going to go to the house and pick it up. We don't want to require them to do that. I think you should have some language that says that the designated pickup point, or some language that keeps them from having to go into the backyard and get it.
Any other comment as it relates to the number of pickups or the frequency?
If we do not hear any other comments after the fact or whatever, we will consider that part of the language.
I think, I think my consensus is at least once a week.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. The next point in that section, Item G, we have licensed household solid waste collectors shall schedule normal collections between the hours of currently listed 6:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. This is in reference to some situations where we've been alerted to collectors that are picking up at 3:00 a.m. in the morning, making a lot of noise and disturbing the neighborhoods. Again, we're seeking the board's direction on if this is something you want to include, let us know. If it's not, let us know that. And if you do want to include, we would like you all to have the input on the specific times.
Commissioner Richardson?
I don't have a problem with that, but I think we need to leave ourselves an opening, and we should say unless other, unless other times are designated by the director or whoever. Because you never know when you're going to get into a situation where you need to collect it in the middle of the night. But I think we need to leave that up to someone to make that decision, and then they can collect it in the middle of the night.
But. Good. Oh.
I think it's imperative that we stress that we collect after 6 o'clock, if at all possible, so people could have quiet enjoyment where they live. It could be a benefit we give the county citizens that some places in the city do not get.
Well, I want... Well, the, on, on page ten, at the very top, what, what they're proposing is six AM up to nine PM. John?
It's locked in, at least my reading of the ordinance is locked in, they can't get it before six AM in the morning or after nine PM at night. But what I was suggesting is between six and nine. Let's say you had a hurricane, and people couldn't get out for a week. Then we need special provisions, so you come up with the language that allows emergency or unusual conditions. I don't think it should come to the commissioners, I think the director can make that decision.
Language currently says that waste collectors shall schedule normal collections between the hours of six and nine. We could add an additional sentence that says, um, please notify the county if it's required to do something outside of those hours.
I don't think giving us notice that they're going to do it, I don't think giving us notice that they're going to do it, uh, solves the problem. I think permission or direction or approval is required. I don't want somebody to notify us that they all of a sudden changing when they're collecting trash. We need to, we need, the director needs to make that decision, or the manager, or somebody.
Right, so I think the language could be something as simple as unless approved by the county in advance.
Yeah, that's fine.
I would ask for directions, say you're only saying in, uh, extreme circumstances, would it be allowed to be before six AM?
That's right.
Uh, Commissioner Rebo.
And, and I know, I'm speaking from my own personal experience, during the middle of the summer when it's hot, he starts, he's in our neighborhood at four o'clock. Okay? Because they're, they're getting beat up at four in the afternoon.
That's why I was asking, because that's, is that considered an extreme circumstance? I do know that during the, the hot part of the year, um, that's when people do, they do get out early because they're trying to beat their heat.
Yeah, I mean, you just listen to the news, they're telling people to start early after they're out, working outside, right now.
We just need specific direction from the commissioners. Whether do they start before six, or are they not allowed to start before six?
I don't know, do you want them all calling you every day during the summer?
We're receiving phone calls, we're receiving phone calls from, um, from residents, but we also receive phone calls, we understand the business owners, and we understand why they are out there working. When we're reading meters, we have people on as soon as the sun comes up. Thankfully, you know, our vehicles are not as loud, so we don't have issues with that. But I, I do understand where the companies are coming from, so again, it's, um, I, I can see both sides, so we just need to know.
I personally object to having a six AM minimum. What, what do you think about, uh, one hour before sunrise?
It wouldn't get done during the winter.
I, I mean, can't, can't we come up with some language that, that gives Brian and Christina the ability to change that if it's requested? I mean...
I think there's a possibility of doing that. I think it's whether the board wants to have, it's whether the board wants to say, yeah, we agree with that, and, and if our decision is that if the heat index gets to a certain level, then we, we are allowed to, to go to work as early as you need to go to work. And the board would say, okay, we understand that, we get that, and, and staff's not going to get berated for it.
I think it's, you're, you're perfectly capable of developing the parameters, uh, of which this may apply. And there are unknown parameters out there that none of us foresee, and which you may still want to do it. As I say, a hurricane, uh, you know, you don't want to get locked into something that, that's going to be a problem for you down the road, you need some discretion. But I don't care as long as the discretion is there, and if you want to have guidelines, I don't care about that either.
Right, right now, we do not have any kind of restriction on the time, so.
We don't even license.
Okay. Do we need a straw vote on, on the time? I mean... I think, I, I think here again, you know, if you guys get to the point where it needs to be changed, or you need some help, you're going to come back to us on the time.
Well, I just, I just think they need the discretion. I mean, they know what they're doing, they know when conditions are bad. You don't want the public in, have to come to a commissioners meeting to demand that trash collection be changed. That's, that's, that's not a commissioner's decision, that's a common sense decision that, that either the manager or the director should be able to make. And, uh, and, and, and as the manager suggested, you can write up some perimeter, parameters. Don't ask us unless it falls in one of these categories, because the answer is no. But we're running the county, we don't, we don't need to lock ourselves into something that we're going to have twenty-five people in here saying, "We need, demanding that trash be picked up." That's, that's making our problem worse.
Do we, do we have four more people that want to change the time?
I, I can see where it needs to be lowered. I mean, you, you got a whole kinds of noise out there, you got house framers, you got roofers. So certain times of the year, they are going to do it, or need to do it, and earlier, as early the better, as soon as they can see. So I, but it won't, I don't think it's going to be an issue in the wintertime, I, I don't, you know, they're not going to get up in, where it's frosty and start driving that, that, uh, trash truck around. So I think it's going to be specific, and I think if there's a heat alert, that's something you can tell somebody that calls in, say, they were, you know, picking up at four AM, say, but, well, there's a heat alert and we allow it. So that, you know, however you word it, I think, I think, I can see where that's important. I, I hear them too at three in the morning, but I don't, you know, it's not a bother, I know why they're there.
Have you, have you got a consensus? I mean...
It, it seems to me that dealing with, the, the issue would be dealing with the environmental conditions, the heat. Is there anything other than that that's a reason not to go for that?
No, that's why we want it open-ended.
They, you know, they may have a work, they may have a staffing shortage.
Yep.
Okay?
Oh, yeah.
And they're working twelve-hour days or fourteen. Yeah, I'm sure their customers would rather have them pick up at four in the morning than not pick up at all.
And that happens now with grass mowers. I mean, the grass is growing like crazy, so they're cutting it whenever they can.
And again, we understand that, this is something that has been discussed, I know it's been discussed with some of you as well, because you've received complaints, so we just wanted to get it out into the open, to see what was the pleasure of the board. Because we, um, again, we understand the concerns of both parties, and we just wanted to see if that was something that the board wanted to include in the ordinance or not include in the ordinance. If you're not doing it, then we can drop it.
Okay. You want to get, you want to get to the next, uh, section?
So the next few sections, um, essentially talk about basically what we do now and gets it in writing, so we have something that's enforceable. There's not a lot, or shattering in there, I wouldn't call it, um, but it gives us something to go back and when we get to the penalties, we, we have something to point to and say, this is our ordinance, it's in section so-and-so, and here's the penalty associated for violating that. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time in either of those, in any of those sections unless there are any questions. I'm going to move on to the enforcement and penalties.
I have one more question.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I understand that the, the ordinance is broad enough that we can clean up, uh, we can clean up the roadside, certainly if we, if people are dumping trash on the roadside. But it, it's some, one, uh, statement in there says, "All properties are all places in Beaufort County." So if we need to, we can go on to private property and clean it up.
I believe that gives us the latitude to do that. Um, that would certainly be in the board's direction.
That's fine, it's the board's direction.
And if certain conditions are met.
Yes.
And the, the first step is not for us to go and to clean the property, the first step is to request the property owner to clean the property.
I understand.
Again, the, the standard language of if it's a health hazard, you know, a lot of the same conversations that we've had previously regarding that. It, it just more clearly outlines what is allowed and what is not allowed, and the stockpile of trash and solid waste on your property is not allowed.
Okay.
Questions for enforcement? That's in the separate ordinance, um, that's, we decided to break out from this based on the differences in the language.
Private property now, I, I, I just have a problem with that.
Again, it would all be after a process. Um, if, if there's no cooperation there, and it's deemed something that the board feels is necessary, that would be the direction of the board. Enforcement, um, that section, you may notice, has a little bit of, uh, nonspecific language. That is partly due to the uncertainty of what does our, our enforcement staffing look like? Are we going to down the road, we're going to, are we going to have a enforcement officer? We don't know. But what we've done is tried to write the, the section so that it applies to the different options that may happen, whether it's myself, Christina, if the sheriff's office is responsible for enforcing this, or health department has some part in this as well. We, we try not to say enforcement officer, we've tried to be a little more generalized, so that we have some leeway there when it comes to, when those decisions are made. Enforcement, uh, letter C, we have put in the, um, the, the option, I will say, to, uh, we may issue a warning letter or warning citation. The, the reason for may is there may be situations that warrant a warning. Let's say somebody has something blow out of the back of their truck, and they made an attempt to secure their stuff, and it came out. Versus somebody who'd made no attempt to secure their load, and it, two or three bags fell out. We see that as an opportunity to say, well, you made an attempt, maybe it's, it's warranted to give you a warning for this, and, uh, maybe next time you'll do a little bit better. Where if you made no attempt, you're clearly in violation of the policy or the ordinance, then maybe a warning's not, um, warranted for that situation. So severity, intent, level of cooperation could all factor in that decision to the person who's writing that letter or that warning citation. The next, next section of that goes into, we do have a provision in here where we would allow, um, a violator to perform some type of remedial cleanup activity at the discretion of, um, Christine or myself. Um, if it's something that we feel like the person can go out there and clean up and buy, in lieu of some other violation, then we can allow that. But if, you know, there's some other kind of situation that restricts that, maybe it's a safety issue that where this person cannot go out there and, um, clean up, then maybe we wouldn't allow it, and...
Having said that, who's responsible if this person were to get, like, hit by a car or something like that?
Um, I believe that would go back to our liability section.
And are they going to be monitored? I mean, they're going to wear a vest and none, none of that?
None of that is, is listed in this ordinance. It would be a choice that if they wanted to do, and again, we took that from the direction from the board, the previous actions, um, regarding Magnolia School Road, we were told to go and investigate, and then notify the people and give them the option to come and pick it up. So that's why we didn't include that in this ordinance, because we thought that that was the, the pleasure of the board.
Are there any trash enforcement officers or around, counties around us?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. Their landfill's on fire right now.
That's not good. Any questions about the enforcement section before I move on to penalties?
Questions? Okay.
Okay.
Move on.
So what we've done in the penalty section is we have, uh, made it the county's right to, um, take any one or more of the actions that we have, um, spelled out in the section. Part of this came from our, our conversations with the school of government and some things we've learned from them, I'll get into that a little bit later. But we have denial of use, if there's something that they're doing, we can deny them from using that service. And they would then therefore have to find a different service to use. Recovery of costs, so if we have to spend money remedying what this violator has done, we can turn around and recover the costs from the violator, and, and any nature is like a, a normal debt. And what we've done, like in the situation where we are cleaning up some accumulated waste on our property, our first, um, attempt is going to be to hold the person responsible for the cleanup responsible. So the originator of the waste, where we go out and we look and we find addresses and names, and anybody that has had possession of that waste at some point could be held responsible for dumping that waste where they were not supposed to dump it. In the event where there's nothing that can be found, and waste just continues to accumulate on a property, that would be where it would then become the responsibility of the property owner to take care of that waste. And if the county has to go in and take care of that, then file an lien on the property after the fact if we don't get the cooperation up front. So those are two, two options we've built in for recovering costs. Next sections go kind of into civil penalties and criminal penalties. Um, we met with the couple of attorneys from the school of government, we've, you know, in relation to what you heard just a few minutes ago about removing criminal penalties from development rate-related ordinances, we've been advised that our ordinance does not fall under that guideline. So the criminal penalties would still be appropriate for what we're doing here. We've also been advised that we can do this kind of in an increasing severity manner. So if we're not getting cooperation with civil penalties, then we can move to criminal penalties. We don't necessarily have to start with criminal, we can, we can do both at the same time, but we don't have to do that. And, um, we have learned that any penalty fees that are associated with this, anything in excess of, excess fees would be required to go to the schools. So that's why we have the recovery of cost section and we have the penalty section. So we may, may have to pass the penalties on to the school, but we can still recover the cost we've been born to clean up the, the situation. Any questions about the penalties?
Questions? You've done a good job covering them.
All right. Um, last thing kind of presented is, uh, a draft revised solid waste fee schedule. What this presents is it includes our civil penalties that we've spelled out, uh, the, the actual number associated with that penalty. Um, we've got tiers of the penalties, so tier one is, I think, littering. Tier two, scavenging, uh, like at the collection sites, improper transportation, um, failure to remove solid waste from the property after notification, and violations of our requirements for using the collection sites. And then tier three would be things like illegal dumping or illegal burning of solid waste. So differing levels of penalties associated with those. There's also, uh, omitted by mistake, uh, we would also have the solid waste collector privilege license in there. Our recommendation would be forty dollars a year for that. And then there was also a line in there for uncertified scrap tires, which we actually could have done before this, but we'll incorporate this. And that would be for any tires that are brought in that are not generated in North Carolina, or are not accompanied by a valid certification form. Don't know how often that'll happen, but it's something we can do if the situation arises. We will have to come up with a number for that, that we feel is appropriate. Just to briefly mention what we see as next steps regarding this document is we would finalize the document reflecting to the changes you all have made tonight, as well as any that you might would send to us after the fact or call us with, and we would anticipate including the final version in the September agenda. Our understanding is, and, uh, Mr. Francisco, you can, or, uh, Mr. Manager, you may correct us if we're wrong here. No ordinance specifying a criminal penalty may be enacted at the meeting in which it is first introduced. So we would anticipate two, um, readings of this ordinance before we could put it into effect.
You got a comment, Brian?
Well, no, we probably need to check that. I know that there's, there's a statute that reads that, that an ordinance or anything that has the appearance of an ordinance can't be passed on first reading unless it's unanimous. If it's not unanimous, then it has to come back for a second reading. I'm not sure about the criminal piece, but if, if it's there, we'll make sure, the same thing, but that's the one I'm familiar with. I, I would, I would make a comment to the board. I would make a comment to the board, if I may, that especially in the enforcement side of this, as you are all well aware, you get calls fairly often, I'm sure, regarding littering and things like that. We have a very large county, we have a county that's split by the river. In order for an ordinance to work and to do what it needs to do and for the board to be comfortable that it's put out, put an ordinance in place that you can reasonably say to your constituents, we'll make that happen, I would encourage you to consider applying the appropriate resources to be able to support this ordinance as it's needed because without it, it's just paper. Thank you.
Okay. Is that... Far as the driving force in enforcement of this, it sounds like the burden is on the county to initiate action. What about a citizen? How do they make a complaint? Do they make a complaint to you and then you pick up the ball? Or do we have to go out and find this on our own?
So we have in here, the provisions of this article shall be enforced by the inspection of property and by the observation of persons who are suspected of violating any of the provisions contained herein. So that would obviously give us the power to, if we see something, then take action on it. However, I do believe that if we received a complaint following our investigation of the complaint, we could then take action on that.
So it's complaint driven?
Yes, especially for the first time after this is issued because there's not adequate county resources to enforce this. Similar to littering, there's general statutes that are relevant to littering, but we all know that everyone that litters might get a ticket, so that's the same with this. I'd encourage everyone to read this document fully and more than once because there is a lot of information that is in this document that is different than how Beaufort County has conducted business in the past. Similar to reading your Bible, too much to do it, do a chapter a night because it's dry reading, but there's a lot of information that is in here and I really would want to make sure that we all understand because I do believe our phones and emails will come alive when this gets live, so let's be prepared.
The only problem I have, only question I have, it's not a problem, is going on private property. That's the, and see, if you ask this to the government, the answers that they give you is probably somebody, nobody never told them that Beaufort County don't have a zoning ordinance. Did y'all tell them that?
Yes, sir. And actually, the next two ordinances, that's actually one of the things that I have highlighted that each of you will receive electronically tomorrow and I have hard copies to give you now to read if you need it for your evening reading pleasure. But most of these ordinances are enforced and enacted and carried out by planning the zoning departments, which obviously we do not have zoning. Much of the language we've had to revise to remove instances where the wording said, when you do not comply with current zoning measures, then this will occur. We do not have zoning.
Some areas or some streets that you can ride on for miles and miles and see some yards that need cleaning up or some junk that need to be hauled off. But you, but that was the question I had, that I want to be very, very sure that since we wasn't a county that had zoning, you just can't come up and tell me to where my backyard moved my car. That's what I was worried about, but if you got the information, I would read it thoroughly.
Read it, and again, we tried to come up with what we thought we were asked to do because of very specific manufactured homes and then junk vehicles, which of course, when you dig into the legal terms, there's more than just junk, there's junk, there's abandon, there's nuisance, there's all these different things. So we've tried to address that, but again, we are providing this to you and then you can decide how you'd like to proceed, quantities, you know, what's considered junk, what's... So we're providing that to you than just asking for direction because again, we will need to enforce it and to carry it out, but we're just looking for direction.
Let's get back to the solid waste. Any other discussion on the solid waste ordinance? Commissioner Repolz.
When you come back next month, could you come back with a plan to communicate this to the public? Because as you just pointed out, this is a culture change. And if we don't do that, then you're right, we're going to light up the phones with us. I think you, I think we need to have a plan, much like Pitt did, to communicate to the public that there is now a new sheriff down.
Well...
If you...
If that's the case, we will be happy to do that and thankfully we know Brandon...
We're not going to go on anybody's property without you.
So we will have that, but again, we need to know how it will be enforced. We can, of course, present the rules and regulations, the ordinance as it's written, provide that to people the best that we can and get that information out. And Brandon will be able to help us with that.
Well, I think we probably need your recommendation on that, too. I mean, we don't have, we don't go talk to all these other counties and municipalities, so...
Mr. Langley?
This is just a thought that came into my mind. How about if you put some signage that pretty much says the county, beginning since that today, the county has new guidelines governing and for more information, you can go to X, Y, and Z and find out exactly.
I'm sure it'll be a multi-pronged approach. We can run the banner across the commissioners' meetings, we have the public access channel where we can do things, Brandon will put together, he can put together a little video that talks about that. We can, of course, Facebook page, webpage, things like that that will get the information out.
Did you have anything else to add to it?
No, just to let you know, again, the manufactured homes and the junk automobiles, during the break, I'll give each of you a hard copy of that and then you're going to have the electronic copy in your emails tomorrow. Please review that and give us comments following the same procedure that we did with the solid waste ordinance so that if you can read it at the beginning, kind of give us direction on how you want us to move forward and then we can finalize it and bring it back.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, we will do absolutely our best to telegraph this thing and make sure that it's out there. I mean, hearing what the board is saying and making sure we get that information out ahead of time, I mean, what we may look at since this is coming back at the next meeting, it may be a January 1 implementation date to where we can get some good media attention on and say, we're letting you know, it's coming, it's coming, it's coming.
Thank you very much. We're making progress. Okay, we're down to the next item, economic development, the Aurora Industrial Park, infrastructure. Brad?
Chairman Waters, members of the council. I'm here today to discuss a project I've been working on or my office has been working on and the town of Aurora has been talking about and planning for the last seven or eight years. And that is the Aurora Industrial Park that you guys are no stranger to, your commitment to provide a loan for the land acquisition. I do want to recognize Kurt Ryan with the Aurora Leadership Council who's here in the audience today and is available to answer any questions that you may have. And Mayor Cliff Williams from the town of Aurora was planning to attend, but he had a conflict as well tonight with his town council. So definitely want to talk a little bit about the history of the project and kind of how we got to today to have additional funding on your agenda. As you recall, the town of Aurora has suffered some economic challenges over the years with Nutrien being the largest employer in the county located there. The town has suffered some loss of jobs and residents have moved out and there's been some challenges with their downtown and loss of grocery store and healthcare challenges just recently. So one of the things the town has done in their planning, and this was a big part of the Aurora strategic plan, was to focus on some positive wins for the community. The first amongst those was the development of an industrial park. And that industrial park would help grow the tax base of the town of Aurora as well as provide some assistance to Nutrien to provide a location for some of their contractors and vendors to have a location off of their, the Nutrien property to have of their own where they could operate and not be on the Nutrien grounds and maybe be susceptible to accidents that may affect Nutrien's ability to operate. So our office, the Economic Development Office of Beaufort County has been involved for several years in assisting the town with their efforts in planning this industrial park. That is what triggered the idea to get the town of, or Beaufort County to loan the town of Aurora the funds to purchase the property. And that was done so in an agreement that the town must first pre-sell seventy-five percent of the cost of the loan before the loan would be triggered. And so the project pivoted toward that effort and some consultants that worked with the town went about trying to pre-sell those seventy-five percent of the land cost. And that has taken place with Bullhead being one of those suppliers to Nutrien, as well as Beaufort County Community College has committed to building a satellite facility there on, in the industrial park as well as the Aurora Fire Department that would purchase a lot and expand in that. So from that, in that interim period when they were trying to sell the seventy-five percent, we went about planning and started reaching out to funders. And in 2019, the North Carolina Department of Commerce Utility Account, that's under the Rural Infrastructure Authority, had awarded an initial fund of seven hundred and fifty thousand, and that was done in conjunction with the Golden Leaf Foundation that provided two hundred thousand dollars in funds. And those funds would be used for planning, hiring a civil engineer to do the planning of the industrial park, understanding all of the due diligence that would be needed and the required permits to develop the infrastructure for the industrial park. And so that two hundred thousand dollars that was awarded in 2019 has been used to fund the work of our civil engineer. And we've been having meetings every week with a stakeholder group around the Aurora Industrial Park since I've been in my position. In, we were, once we hit that threshold of, the town did, of seventy-five percent in sales, we were ready to move forward with the grant. And we knew through the civil engineer and others that the cost of construction had increased significantly. And this, again, was prior to 2019 when the original funds were provided and a variety of factors went into why those costs were higher. So what we did was decided to go ahead and put it out to bid to go ahead and understand what those costs really were by an actual contracting firm that would be doing the work. And so the bid was put out in October of 2022. And at that time, we identified a large gap in our funding. Originally, we thought roughly a million dollars was going to be enough to get this project done, and when we put it out to bid, it was closer to two million dollars. So in, we started to look at where were some additional funding sources. And we approached the original funders, which was the North Carolina Department of Commerce, and started lobbying them to provide an increased grant amount for, to get, make this project happen. We also approached Golden Leaf Foundation in that regard, and both of them in separate grant awards had awarded additional funds for this project. The North Carolina Commerce Utility Account provided an additional half million dollars and also Golden Leaf provided an additional half million dollars in support of the Community College's satellite facility. And those funds were awarded directly to the town of Aurora. And so we, in executing those grants and moving forward, the Golden Leaf Foundation had, in part of their paperwork, identified a uses and sources of funds. And we identified that there had been a gap of about a little over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars identified and that we would need to plug that hole from some source. And so that's what has us arrive now, that we've got everything in order to move forward with the construction of the project, but we are short an amount that roughly, we feel like is around two hundred thousand would give us enough leeway to make sure that gets done. The town of Aurora and the Aurora Leadership Council would mention that this is a project that is fundamental to their growth and revitalization of the town. We, they feel like the town's industrial park would help increase the tax base of the town of Aurora, would also assist Nutrien, it would help diversify the economy of Aurora, would help with increase the housing demand that is around the area. It would also help with their recruitment of a grocery store and healthcare facilities and certainly help with their educational aspirations with the Community College satellite being located in town. The amount that has been appropriated for this project to date is one million nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that's the funds that are basically waiting in limbo for us to move forward. The Community College as well, they have been appropriated funds for this project and it's waiting on go. And so what we've done is, the town of Aurora and has wanted to put on the agenda a request for funds for a gap and we wanted to submit that and hear from you what you feel like would be the appropriate course of action to help fund this gap. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about the project and certainly would offer Kurt Ryan's expertise from the town's perspective on anything that you may feel needed to be answered.
I'll start. To me, we're looking at two separate projects. We're looking at the purchase of the land and what it takes to do that part. Then we've got the infrastructure. And what you're, what I'm getting at, the construction cost is a million nine sixty-eight and the engineering cost for the infrastructure is two hundred thousand and a hundred of that's already been spent.
Yes, sir. We, the, back in 2019, the Golden Leaf Grant that the town received went to, for pre-construction work, and that old grant amount had been two hundred thousand. And we really have been spending that money and being funded through Golden Leaf on a drawdown through that grant. And so there's some funds still pending in that grant amount. We hadn't spent all of those funds and so those funds would be, there's still some work that still needs to be done and paid for, but the remainder of those funds, we've been told we can apply toward the actual cost of infrastructure and which is that one point nine figure you guys have.
So the two hundred thousand that you're asking the commissioners to consider really all goes to the infrastructure side of the equation?
Yes, it's directly for the cost of the infrastructure.
Okay. Is it, is it true that Golden Leaf and Commerce, this Beaufort County, does not have any skin in the game?
Well, they certainly, when we've gone through our funding, we've made sure that they're aware that the loan itself for the land acquisition was funded through Beaufort County. And so that's certainly, you know, what our financial commitment as the county has been to date, other than the time and work of the Economic Development Office.
But they're looking, the loan is not a commitment. I mean, it gets the land, but it's not really money going into the infrastructure and the project like the state is doing and Golden Leaf.
Yeah, where the land acquisition's covered through the generosity of the previous commissioners that have approved that, but right now, our gap is in funding the infrastructure. And really wanted to put that forward at your decisions, how best to do so.
Commissioner Repolz?
Can you refresh us on what the original commitment from Golden Leaf was and NC Commerce before the construction costs were given?
Yes. Seven hundred and fifty thousand was awarded by the North Carolina Department of Commerce originally and two hundred thousand from Golden.
Okay.
That was in nineteen.
Right, okay.
And at the time, I believe that it was estimated that the cost would be... And at the time, I believe that it was estimated that the cost would be about a million dollars, a little bit less. And that included the civil engineering work that had been done by the consultant.
So Commissioner Reddick, the packet that you had, the packet that you have in front of you on page two lists all that funding.
Were you, did you have another question?
Well, part of the Golden Leaf then really didn't go towards, I mean, went through the engineering, not the actual build of the construction. So that's really where our shortage came up?
Yes. And we really didn't know what those construction costs would be until we got those bids back in first October. And then the final bids that we've done was March of 2023. So that's when we had, we had already went to the, the funding sources again because we knew from that October, October bid that our original budget was not accurate. And at that time, they funded as much as they could. We really, it was a challenge to get those funds secured by those two funding agencies. Because again, they are used to funding a, a project once. And we had to go back to them and, and do some advocacy on behalf of the, the town and the project. And they did see fit to award an additional half a million each of those funding agencies.
Commissioner Langley.
There was never any contingency.
On the grant? So are you talking about from the grant funds?
Yeah.
They awarded those grant funds actually in 2019. And so they've been keeping that in reserve for the town of Aurora since 2019. And so they're a little anxious to get these funds spent and out the door. And the same with Golden Leaf. And speaking with them, the funds that they've allocated the initially is already being, being spent for this project. So they certainly would love to see this project move forward. And, and also for the additional funds that they've given, the additional 500,000, we are in the process of finalizing that grant paperwork and entering into an agreement, the town would be entering into that agreement with, um, a Golden Leaf. And so they have indicated that if we are not able to secure those funds in some manner, they may have to reappropriate those funds. And so then we would be further in the hole trying to make this project move forward.
Commissioner Walker?
Is this project completely stopped? And would this money help it get it going again?
Yes. I mean, at this point, the funds, we, we, we have the funds, the grant funds committed, but, and we have a bid, a contractor that's agreed to honor the bid. But we are, are really not able to move forward unless we fill this, what we fill roughly $200,000 gap in some manner.
Commissioner Beath.
You stated that you sold 75% of the lots. And the contract that we have with the counties, when you sell a lot, you pay that county that $400,000 back yet. Have you made a payment on that $400,000?
No, the town has not. In fact, they've not, um, we, they've not actually closed on the land sales to the three entities. We have closed on, or the town has closed on purchasing the land from the original landowner. And that was utilizing the funds that the county had submitted.
Well, how did you arrive with 75% of the lots had already been sold?
They've been committed for.
Is there a difference in a commitment and sold?
Uh, well, yeah, yes, I would say so.
Yeah.
And, and one of the things that's held us back, or held the, the town back on moving forward is getting some, they have to subdivide the parcels in order to record the deed. And they, they've, they've done that for two of the parcels and there's one additional parcel that they need to do that work on.
Yes, my question, thank you.
Commissioner Langley. This is my last one. If we were to move forward with this $200,000, you're not coming back asking for any more money.
That is not my intention. In fact, we've been talking to our civil engineer and the company. They say it's not necessarily rocket science, what we're doing here, and that we don't anticipate much changes. We're talking about infrastructure, water, roadways, water and sewer pipes and, and that sort of thing. So there's not a lot of things that could go wrong, weather conditions or, or what have you. So that's the, the answers. I mean, you couldn't guarantee that. But we feel strongly that, from the consultant, that they can get this done in about 90 days once they get the green light.
Commissioner Richardson.
Well, when I came into this meeting tonight, after looking at the information that was presented, I intended to vote against what you wanted to do. I've changed my mind, I'm going to vote for it for the, for the simple reason that this agony is finally ending. I am, I am concerned that we appropriated this money as long ago as we did and that the leadership in getting the project completed hasn't simply not been there. You know, being aggressive with, with what was touted as the future of Aurora and so it's such an important project and all this sort of thing is, is a part of the execution. And, uh, and certainly if they had been aggressive, there'd be a million dollars that wouldn't even be on the table that we're talking about today. So I am, I am concerned about leadership. And I want to know what is the anticipated completion date if we grant you this money tonight?
From the contractor, they had indicated it would be about a 90-day construction timeline. And so from the time we release funds and secure and do the paperwork that the grant funding agencies, we feel like it would be a relatively quick turnaround. So I'd say.
Don't dig your hole too deep. I deal with contractors. I've got water and sewer projects that I'm working with. So I know what's involved here. From the time that you grant the notice to proceed, how long will it take for the contractor to complete the project?
They say 90 days.
From the time that you give the notice to proceed?
That's what, that's what they've said, yes, sir.
And that's a notice that your engineer would give to the contractor?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Again, I, you know, I'm very concerned about leadership. Aurora's drying up probably because of lack of leadership more than anything else. So I've been familiar with Aurora since 1981 because I worked down there. So, and I've seen it shrivel up, shrink and go away. These things are hard to reverse. The sales pitch that goes along with the contractors are going to move from the site out to the subdivision, to the industrial subdivision, just doesn't make sense to me from a manufacturing standpoint. So I think you've got a long haul to go. And, and the date, again, three months from the notice to proceed, let's presume that we approve this tonight, they give a notice to proceed on September the 1st. So we got October, November, we're talking about a project that's going to be complete by the first of the year.
So the front end of that, the front end of that is there's agreements that gotta be executed with Commerce. So I don't know what timeframe that is. I, I agree with you that from the time they get execution, the, the notice to proceed, the contractor said 90 days. But we're in the wet season too, cold wet season. And, and it is, I mean, it's, it's, it's grading, it's, it's putting in water lines, sewer lines. It's not, it's not difficult.
Oh, I understand, I'm into business.
But it can be an issue when you get into the wet season.
Uh, but, but again, I'm concerned that this project has gone on as long as it has and that the town of Aurora, the people that claim they wanted this have not been aggressive in being successful with it. So if it comes back, I'll be voting against it. And you guys got an execution problem on your hands.
Commissioner Dethridge.
Yeah, just from my personal understanding, the lots that you say you have commitments on.
Yes, sir.
These commitments, are they predicated upon the engineering, not only the engineering being done so that you can ascertain what the division of the lots are and record them at the courthouse? Which of course is going to elevate you to a whole nother, uh, planning, uh, status. But also is, is it predicated upon the work being done in 90 days? The utilities being put in?
No, the, the commitments to purchase of our firm, there are some additional contractors that are kind of on the fence that would like to have expressed an interest to the consultants and to the town into purchasing lots. But we're not counting those because I think what they are saying is they want to make sure that this project is going to happen and that dirt is turning before they feel comfortable in committing. But the, the three that, that, that we've outlined here are firm commitments.
And you're selling them for like 30, around $33,000 an acre?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Commissioner Beath.
I'm still concerned. I haven't made my mind up yet whether I'm going to vote for it or not because basically I agree with you. We've been dragging this thing out since, uh, 2019. I don't agree with the part about poor leadership. I never talk about another person, another, when there's a power to another government agent's leadership. But I want to, but I want to tell, I want to tell you this. I know today that you're not going to be ready in 90 days if you haven't sold a lot yet because it'd take that long to get the paperwork done to the rest of the deeds office. So don't be, don't, don't box yourself in for 90 days because it's not going to happen. And I really, it can't happen in 90 days.
Yeah, and that's, you know, part of the, the frustration with the project is, um, you know, we can only control the things we can control. And, and so what, we're trying to do our part and move this football down the field. And I think we've made a lot of progress. I, I know personally, when we saw those initial bids and we, we knew that that cost was way higher than the town had anticipated, we, it was a real challenge for us. But once we secure those additional grant funds and we are so close to the finish line, I think that's the position we're in today. And so we're working with, you know, a team here and, uh, and, and what, what they've indicated and some things that have to be done. But I do feel like things are, are tacking in the right direction at this point.
Commissioner Reddick.
Yeah, yeah, one of the things is they couldn't sell any lots until they got ownership of the land. And that just happened.
If they get ownership today, you had to go through tower searches and all that, it's still got to close for 90 days. I mean, I'm not.
Okay, wait.
So just, just to be clear, that there is some pre-work that's got to be done. But what we're talking about on the 90 days is from the time the contractor gets notice to proceed.
Yes.
We're not saying start tomorrow, 90 days.
Right. Yeah, the, and, and I see as tasks that still need to be performed are finalizing the grant paperwork from Commerce and from Golden Leaf. And then the notice to proceed. And then at, while that's being done, the town can finalize their, um, plats and record those and actually execute those sales. And then they can pay back those proceeds back to the county is how I see the next steps.
I'm going to, I'm going to call your attention to the handout that you got in front of you. Says the industrial park revised. This summarizes the money that was done in 1923 and what the total is. And then if you looked at 10% of that number, that's 195,000. I, I think it's coming in light and clear from, from the two big ones on the infrastructure is that Beaufort County needs to have some skin in it. And a loan enables that, but we're expecting it to be paid back. To me, with this much money coming in, we need to have, we need to have an investment. We need to show that we're behind it and, in order to make it work. I'm opposed to doing an additional $200,000 in a loan, but I am in favor of doing 195,000 in cash.
Grant.
Uh, in, in the form of a grant. The, uh, the thing about it is, in addition to that, we've got the commitment to do the, the college new construction, which is, I, I don't know whether that's deeded to the college or whether it's deeded to the county. And then Nutrient's putting in 100,000 in equipment. So we're getting full, almost 4.6 million dollars put into that project. And, uh, you know, we, we do all kinds of things at the industrial park here in Washington to try to attract. And if they need infrastructure, we, we try to help them get it and then we have to do a match. We just got through doing Wright's Creek Park. Now listen to this, listen to these numbers. The state's putting in 405,000 and our county's putting in 307,000. Say it again, for the public. We're putting in 307 of the county's money and the state's putting in 405. I, I understand where people are coming from when they talk about the drag, but we're talking about an ordinance and stuff. I mean, we take, we take forever. We've never addressed solid waste until now. I mean, I think if you start a project in 2019 and you can do it in five years, I think they've done pretty good. So I just think it's, I think it's wrong for us to put in another 200,000 in the form of a loan. I think we need to show that we're behind Aurora. I mean, that's our largest taxpayers down there. I mean, they pay us 7.1 million dollars. Now, in the business world, you don't have to, I mean, you don't have to be that smart to realize that's where our biggest taxpayer is and most of this is going to benefit Nutrient. So I'm going to make a motion that we provide a grant of 195,000.
And I'll second it.
Now it's open for discussion.
Well, I have some discussion.
Go ahead.
It, I, I wonder, wonder what the logic is when someone comes and asks you for a loan and you say, no, I'm going to give you what you want to borrow. The commissioners sitting up here around this table have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers of Beaufort County to not waste their money. This is a highly risky project. And the definition of a highly risky project is one that you have to go to the government and to grant agencies to get the money to do. If this was not a highly risky project, that will probably fail in the long run. The banks and the developers and everybody else would be standing in line in Aurora to do it. But the chairman is trying to give taxpayer money away when we can secure it in a highly risky project. It doesn't make a lick of sense from the standpoint of government, from the standpoint of taxpayers, and I'm going to vote against it.
Commissioner Dethridge.
Um, I think when Hoods said, why would you get a grant 195,000 when you're only asking for a loan for 200,000? Now, I'm looking back decades that I've set up here and we've not done this. Maybe you guys did it at Wright's Creek, I didn't vote for that. But we haven't done this on an ongoing basis. A loan is a good faith effort on our part to allocate funds that hopefully will be restored back to the people of Beaufort County. I'm sure we're not charging any interest. So we're at least doing that and we're helping leverage you, your group and Aurora, leverage the monies they need to make this project work. I can, I can vote for this. I can't vote for granting monies that we just haven't done, or at least I haven't done since I've been up here for 22 and a half years.
I'll, I'll remind, the budget, I think it was five years ago or less, I, we had a situation in Bath where the state of North Carolina agreed to lease part of the old Bath High School. And we approved $50,000 to go into that. We considered the economic development. And that's the way I'm looking at this, is economic development. And to me, we're either in or out.
Let me go again.
So.
Can either one of you want to talk about this grant versus loan?
Sure, I'm happy to speak to that. So this was a staff recommendation. The, I'm sure that the town of Aurora would appreciate those funds being given to them. But this was a staff recommendation based on prior understandings that we were trying to limit our exposure. That was why the loan originally was put together and it was put together on a 75% pre-sale so that we would limit our exposure if it didn't happen. It, it was drug out a while, but, but that is just because of the times. So the recommendation that came from staff was you have a mechanism in place to allow for that to be an additional loan. And from our perspective, based on history, that's what we recommend in, in ensuring that we're limiting that exposure. However, it's the board's decision, majority decision to do what you'd like to do. I think it qualifies as an economic development project. If you want to grant those funds to them, if you want to grant all 200, if you want to grant half of it, it fits the definition of an economic development project. There will be return on that money. And, and I think that, that you have that option.
But Aurora never came in and said, give us a loan. But Aurora never came in and said, give us a loan.
No, sir. I think, I think the conversation with Brad was that they were looking for the county to help fill that gap. And this was a staff recommendation that said, we have that mechanism in place, this protects our exposure. And that was our recommendation.
Anyone else?
Look, using one bad decision to make another bad decision is not very good logic. Just because we threw money away, Wright's Creek project is gonna be another dismal failure. It's gonna go down just like Aurora does unless there's some really aggressive things and some good luck that happen down there. And the county taxpayers have already wasted enough money. We can be, we can be giving, we should have been giving back for the last two years, $5 million a year, in tax money that these commissioners have squirreled away. We're overtaxing people now. And now we're giving money, you know, the old saying about telling the lie for credit when you could tell the truth for cash? That's essentially what's going on here. People ask for a loan and we're digging into the taxpayer's pocket and giving them the money. That's not fiduciary responsibility at all. That is not protecting taxpayers. That's making another really bad decision in the handling of taxpayer money. And what I recommend that we do is vote down the, this resolution, this motion to give the money, and we bring it back up as a loan, which I said I was willing to support. But I am not gonna support giving the money.
Did you have a comment?
Well, just a correction. They never asked for a loan, okay? You've made that statement now twice.
Whoa, whoa, wait a minute. What do you mean they never asked for a loan? What was presented to us was for a loan. That's what's in the documents. I read English very well, and it's in here.
That's what he recommended.
No, that's what's in the documents that were presented to the commissioners. Did you read, did you read your commissioner?
Yes.
You want to clarify that?
Yes, sir. The request from Aurora was assistance to fill the gap. Staff's recommendation was that you had an existing mechanism in place and to limit your exposure, we recommended a loan.
Okay, gentlemen.
I've got one question. Stan touched on it briefly, but if a loan with zero interest and a grant, what's the difference?
You don't understand that? You don't need to be a commissioner.
Well, I mean, with zero interest?
Well, you gotta pay, you gotta pay the loan back.
I know, I know.
Okay, okay.
I know, I know.
Okay, gentlemen. All those in favor of approving a grant of 100, I mean, $195,000, which is 10% of what Commerce and Golden Leaf is putting into the projects, all those in favor of that, raise your right hand. All those opposed? That failed.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I make a motion that we loan at no, at zero interest rate, $200,000 to fill the gap for the town of Aurora.
Second. Okay, we got motion, second. Any questions on that? Okay? All those in favor of doing the loan, the additional loan of 200,000, raise your hand. All those opposed? Is there anything else you need from us?
Not at this time.
Well, and Kirk's back there. I want to say publicly, we appreciate the work that you've done down there in trying to keep everything moving along, and we salute the leadership. And I'm not here to put anybody down. It's a thankless job, what you've done and other people in that community. And I just, I just know it's gonna work. I'm not negative like some people. I think, I think it's a smart business plan. So anyway, we're gonna take a break, and we'll be right back after the break. The next item is the amendment to the hospital master lease agreement to revert the Aurora Clinic to the county. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you, as this board will recall, on January 25th of '23, ECU Health announced that they'd be closing the Aurora Clinic and four other clinics across eastern North Carolina. They said they lost $46 million in the fiscal year ending 2022. This board passed a resolution opposing that, those closures and asked ECU Health to reconsider that decision. We received no response back from ECU Health, and the board tasked the county manager and the county attorney with seeking to remove the Aurora Clinic from the, from the master lease and send it back to the county. Attached, you have an agreement that amends the master lease agreement and transfers the leased property. It's identified as Track 9 in the documents, 151 West 3rd Street in Aurora, and any leasehold interest in Track 9 back to the county upon execution of this agreement. We do not know what currently, what the fiscal impact is on that because obviously there will need to be utilities continued to be paid, there'll need to be some, whatever the board decides to do ultimately with that facility, there'll need to be some upgrades done, we need to make sure the grass gets cut, we need to make sure the electricity stays on, the air conditioner keeps running so that we don't have issues with the building. I met the, I met their facilities manager down there last week, walked through the building. It is in relatively decent shape, probably needs new carpet and a paint job, some new ceiling tiles in certain places, grass needs to be cut. But overall, I think it's in decent shape and could be used to move forward with whatever this board decided. The board had some conversations about trying to provide, to entice a provider to go in down there, which is gonna be a struggle. But we do have opportunities with the health department and other healthcare providers in the county who may be able to use that facility or use it as a staging point to be able to provide some type of medical care in that, in that area. But this, this document you have has been reviewed by the county attorney, and it amends it and transfers that leased property and any leasehold interest in that back to the county upon its execution. The recommendation is move forward and authorize the county manager and the county attorney to execute that agreement. Answer any questions you may have.
Okay, we got a motion to approve the amended amendment of the lease agreement. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Thank you, Brian. The next one you have is Wright's Creek Living Shoreline Project.
Yes, sir. So this is, as you're aware, in '22, '23, or in March of '23, the county was awarded a beach, a public beach and coastal access grant from Division of Coastal Management for Phase 3 of Wright's Creek. Part of that scope of work includes a living shoreline demonstration on the southeast portion of the parcel. They have a proposal from RK&amp;K. They went through an RFP process, which is managed by MidEast. MidEast is, is under contract with the county to manage that project. So RK&amp;K was selected through that RFP process to provide engineering services, to produce the plans and the contract documents for construction of the living shoreline demonstration area, and to provide educational materials for the site. The project fee is lump sum, it's at $23,200. Those fees are currently available, and the project ordinance that was adopted by the board in March of '23, so there are no additional funds needed. But we have the contract in front of you, recommend your approval of the RK&amp;K contract for design services and educational materials.
Got a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Discussion, comments?
I have something.
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's to design the project. Do we have a limit on what the project's gonna cost when they were designing it?
There is a budget for that, yes, sir. I don't have it in front of me, but yes, there is.
$300,000? Something like that?
I hate to call it without knowing it, I'm sorry.
I just want to comment on this environmental issue. You know, they did a designed wetland over at the estuary. The simple truth of the matter is that if you pour water anywhere around here in eastern North Carolina, you're gonna get a wetland. So, you know, we're fighting them off as opposed to building them. But the funny thing about designed wetlands is, if you want to see a miserable site, go look at a designed wetland. They're all struggling to stay alive. And for some reason, if you just leave it natural, it will flourish, but when you start designing them, they become miserable disasters. So I wasn't for this project to begin with, so I'm not gonna vote for this.
Brian, is this the same company that did the community college?
It is, yes, sir.
That one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I just got one question.
Yes.
Is this, you may have mentioned this, I'm gonna ask you again. Are we, is there some kind of a mitigation value associated with this?
Not, no, not that way. I mean, this isn't, this isn't, this isn't creating wetlands to buy credit somewhere else. This is creating a living shoreline in one section, and then further down, there'll be a riprap revetment that stabilizes that area. So this is two different things.
But isn't there wetlands already down there in that piece of property, predominantly wetland?
There are some wetlands in the area, but not where the construction is because you can't get into wetlands in construction.
Okay. So they're taking perfectly good ground to make wetlands out of, or just gonna replant the old, the existing wetlands?
No, sir. It's not, it's not creation of wetlands. It's, it's, it's putting in place a living shoreline. So instead, it's a, it's an alternative to putting in a riprap revetment. We're putting in front of a riprap revetment. What a living shoreline is, is putting certain grasses and certain things that are supposed to stabilize the shore naturally.
But that actually works. I mean, I mean, it's natural. I've, I've got some waterfront that's, that's got a sandy beach, got some reeds behind it, and my neighbors who have bulkheads, they don't have that sandy beach. They spent a lot of money to keep those bulkheads up. Riprap's gonna be the same way. But, and I ain't ever voted for this Wright's Creek thing. But I get it. I get, I get what they're trying to do.
Okay. Any other comment? All those in favor of the contract, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Okay, the next item. Brandon, can I get you to pull up the photographs? I got a call on July the 20th from Mrs. Rosemary Hendry. She is the lady who owns the property that we've discussed from time to time as it relates to the convenience site on Magnolia School Road. This is not too far from the, from the convenience site. I think she has talked, she says she's communicated with Commissioner Richardson. I think she called you too, Katie, and then Katie gave him my number. She has sent me everything about the property since, I think, 1999. Supposedly she hired somebody to go in and clean this up, tear the house down, got her money, did a little work maybe. And so people have taken advantage of her, according to her, because she lives in New York, she is retired. She's not sure who put the boat or when the boat got there. But because of the structure of the house and everything, over the years, people continue to think that's a dump site, especially if our convenience site is closed. I took these today, and when I came by, there's probably about a mile where the DOT or contractors have just mowed the grass, and there's probably, I didn't count, but I'm just estimating 5,000 to 10,000 pieces of trash that has been chopped up by bushhogs. So really, really just looking bad. She asked me if the county would clean it up. And I told her I'd been a commissioner for eight years and that I had never seen us vote in favor of cleaning somebody's property up. But based on her story, I would be happy to put it on the agenda and bring it to the commissioners for consideration since it had been discussed as being one of the sore subjects and bad sites in that area. She has interest in 775 and 963. The 963 appears to me, based on my GPS, to be this property here, and the 775 appears to me to be just a grown-up lot with, with nothing on it. And so I presented it, and it's up for discussion with the commissioners, so.
Chairman, I don't have a problem with cleaning up what's in the right-of-way if it's been hit. I went out and looked at this yesterday. It had not been bushhogs, so apparently they got to it today. But I don't have a problem cleaning up the right-of-way because it is approached Magnolia shores. We shouldn't go on her property and clean this up. For one thing, as she alludes to, me being a bad surveyor in her letter here, I wish you'd have had the courtesy to talk to me before you got into this too deep because I'm not sure she even owns this property. She's trying to claim the property, but I don't think she owns the property. I don't think she, she has any part of ownership on it. She's trying to adversely possess it from New York City, and that's hard to do under the adverse possession laws of North Carolina. So if you wanna, if you wanna tark this back to let's clean up the right-of-way because it's nasty and ugly and messy, I don't have a problem with that. I do have a problem with going on her property, what she claims to be her property, because when I talked to her, her story kept changing and kept changing, and it does in this letter. It starts off in this letter that two, two or three things. Number one, it's her property. Number two, she's trying to get title to the property. And number three, she signed a quitclaim deed, quitclaiming her rights away. So what is going on here? I don't think we need to be trying to deal with the person who's, who doesn't know essentially what's going on, but I don't have a problem with cleaning up the road right-of-way as long as we stay in the right-of-way.
Any other comments? I mean, I don't, Wes, Christina, do we need to do anything under our budget as long as it's in the right-of-way? It's within, it, it within the distance that we approved in the budget?
Total of $15,000 was appropriated for periodic roadside cleanup. That service has been put out for pricing. We've gotten their proposal pack, proposal back and are in the process of getting the contract signed right now. And actually, that got sent out today. And speaking with the low-price contractor, they said they may be, of course, depending on when we can get all the signed documents and everything, move back and forth, they may be able to start their services early as next week. So I would anticipate by the end of the month, hopefully, if everything gets moved back and forth okay, then we'll have that contractor here cleaning up our right-of-way within half a mile on either side of the site. We, for that site in particular, the stretch of road was from Turkey Trot Road all the way to 32. It was a little bit over a mile, but we tried to, we didn't want to do most of the road and leave a tenth of a mile not touched, so that, that service is already in process.
Any other question, comment? I mean, as far as I'm concerned, unless somebody wants to make a motion, that's taking care of the right-of-way, okay?
I'm good.
All right. We're good? All right, we'll get to the next item. Commissioner Richardson, as it relates to the schools.
Well, I have on here a meeting with the school board on improving test scores. This thing's been going on for, since like November of last year, of this board trying to sit down with the school board and talk about test scores in schools and several other things within this, is the future of the ed tech, what do they intend to do with that, and new construction in the school, and actually discipline in the schools. There's a whole bunch of things going on here that we need to sit down and talk to the schools about. We have, the schools did not even appear in front of...
Excuse me. Turn your mic off.
The schools did not even appear in front of the commissioners when we did the budget. So that, that is a big shortcoming there, which leaves a lot of things, a lot of questions unanswered. Now, I would caution that I saw, I have an email, I haven't read it again today, which I intended to do, that the chairman and the vice chairman met with the chairman and the vice chairman of the school board. Who authorized you guys to do that? Who authorized you guys to meet with these people?
Why do we need authorization?
Well, we're trying to get...
We've, we've already had one meeting. We agreed during the budget session. We had the one, and we were asked to follow up and set a, set a date.
Well, the staff was asked, the staff, because I made the request, the staff was asked. Let me remind you, fellas, that we operate as a board, all of us together.
But we understand, we understand that.
Not part of the board going off and making deals with other boards about what's gonna be discussed at meetings and trying to control agendas and things like that. So you, you need to be aware that while I appreciate you getting this meeting together, you need to be aware of what your status is among this board.
Well, so the public understands, when we went to the... Well, I, so the public understands, when we went to the meeting, I took the, I took the sheet out of our meeting in, let's see, would be two months ago. And then also the agenda items that you were requesting. And the school board was kind enough to take three. The first three that we talked about were yours, your agenda items, things you wanted. And so we added two more. And we came up with five. And we agreed that that's what we would, that, that we would talk about those five items in October. The meeting's set for October the 18th at 12:30. And I hope that everybody will put that on their calendar.
Can, can we have a pre, can we have a prenotice of that and an agenda? Because it appears the agenda's already been set.
The agenda's already been set, agreed to by both boards.
No, it wasn't agreed to by the boards. It was agreed to by the chairman and the vice chairmans. It was not agreed to by the boards. Takes a whole vote, a whole board meeting together in order to do something like this.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as, as in the email with the future of the ed tech, improving test scores, facility use studies, construction of the new, new school, and school resource officers. So I make a motion, we approve that budget.
Well, would you-
I mean, that, that agenda.
Would you mind adding discipline in the schools to that?
I-
Because that's been discussed all along.
I, I've made a motion that we take this. No, I'm not entertaining none.
You're not going to talk about discipline in the schools where poor kids are sent home? Where the, where the bad kids get to stay at school and the person that's harmed gets sent home?
We got a motion on the floor. I'm asking if there's a-
I'll second it.
We got, we got a second. Nay. Nay. You want to make an amendment?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to do, Mr. Chairman. I did ask if you would mind including that. I believe that's an amendment.
Okay, no, make it. Make an amendment.
The amendment is that we include school discipline in our meeting with the school board.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in fa-
Wait, wait, hold on.
I have a question.
All right.
You need, you need your mic on.
Yeah, sorry. I specifically remember that when we talked about the problems we were having with the education of our local children, is the discipline problem. That was first and foremost. That was the center stage. I think there were, these other issues are ancillary to that, but discipline was a big part of it. And even to the point of what could we do as a board to help them enforce that discipline? Maybe even spending money if it, if it took it, because it, it is important. We're going to pay all this money we pay for public education. By golly, we pay a lot for public education in this county. Discipline needs to be enforced because you lose discipline in classrooms, you're going to lose the classroom. That's just the way it works. So, yeah, I'm, I'm speaking in favor of this amendment.
Okay. Commissioner Walker?
My question is, will the test scores be back in October?
They, they said they'd be back in September, Brian. I think they were hoping to have them back the middle of September. That's, that's why we were making sure by putting it off in October.
That's why I don't know. Okay.
Any other comments before we vote on the amendment? Okay. Those that are in favor of adding discipline to the agenda, please raise your right hand. Those opposed? Did you vote?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
To add?
Add.
Add, okay. So it's four to three.
No, I assume that, I assume that the school board needs to agree to that.
Yes.
Well, I don't know that they necessarily have to agree to it. It's presented. If they want to vote it down at the meeting, they can. But it's, but the discipline is going to be presented at the school board meeting. And then if, if you want to vote it down or the school board doesn't want to consider discipline as an issue, that's fine with me.
I, I, I think, I think based on the conversation we had, that Brian should just send an email to the superintendent and say that we took a vote and we added that. Out of courtesy, is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, out of courtesy. Okay. All right. You want to go to the cable TV services?
Well, you know, I'll ask the, I'll ask the manager, what's the latest on cable TV services? I think I remember that we found out that maybe the Secretary of State has more authority in this area than the, than the chief lawyer for the state.
Yeah, actually, the, the language that the Secretary of State's office says is that it just, the franchise agreements go through them, but they don't have any control over it. And they will, and, and they specifically say, don't complain to us, complain to the Attorney General's office.
Okay.
On their website.
So have we complained to them?
We, we have.
And have they come back to us?
Not yet, no, sir.
Okay. Well, you know, I, I think that I would like to see if the board would be willing to do a resolution that we press the Secretary of State's office for an answer. That we let them know that this is an important thing.
She's announced you've got to go through the Attorney General.
No, no, she, the Secretary of State, I believe is who they said we had to go through.
Attorney General.
Attorney General. So on the Secretary of State's-
Wait a minute.
So on the Secretary of State's website, the, this franchise agreements, I think, go through the Secretary of State. They list them in there. But they are very clear on their, on their language. It says, we don't have anything to do with complaints relating to that.
They don't have-
All complaints should go to the complaint department with the, with the Attorney General's office, the consumer complaint.
Well, then, then I change my motion, my recommendation, that we press the Attorney General's office for an answer. I mean, if I wanted to be governor, I'd, I'd certainly improve TV coverage.
If, if the board would like to, we can certainly send another letter. I mean, we've sent them a letter and are waiting on their response, but we're happy to do whatever the board wishes.
Well, we've been a month now, and that's, that's, that's a world in, in a lot of time. I, I move that we send another letter, a follow-up letter, requesting a, an answer or a meeting.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
All right, we got a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor of sending the second letter to the Attorney General, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Okay. You want to talk about the register of deeds building, the new building?
Well, this is actually out of order from the way it was presented. It's better to talk about the, the sheriff built out of the jail, because that drives the, the need for a register of deeds new building.
You want, you want, I-
So I'd rather take that up because it comes into a logical sequence. Otherwise, we're going to be backpedaling-
Okay.
-through this whole thing.
Wes, I'll, I'll allow you to switch and talk about the jail expansion.
Well, you know, the jail committee's been in existence for quite a while and really hasn't done anything lately. And we need, we've, we've escrowed or put into the capital budget spending ordinance this $5.6 million. And the sheriff, the number of people is growing in the jail. If you look at the jail enrollment, for lack of a better word, every month, there's a few more people in jail. The district attorney has done a great job of getting rid of a lot of the long-termers in there. But we still have 10 people, according to the last roster from jail, we have 10 people that have been in there six months or longer. And one of these is three years for murder, and then we get down to the other nine or about six or eight months. They've been in there for, for crimes that could have been tried, in my opinion at least. And that is drug charges and things like this. And a lot of them are probably in there because lawyers are shopping for judges and all this sort of thing. But we need to, we need to, we need to, we need to give the sheriff's department some more enforcement abilities because I, as a commissioner, want to go after drug dealing in Beaufort County harder than we've been going after it. And we need more jail space if we're going to do that. And the sheriff needs more facilities. He needs the in, better intake. If you build out the bottom of the jail, according to the work that the jail committee did, if you build out the, the basement of the jail, you would get, and I'm not going to swear to this, but this is what I recall, you would get about 18 more cells. You would get a couple of more cells for isolation. You would have a place for healthcare, a better facility for healthcare and work, and intake facilities. So that was the plan that was presented to the jail committee. And at that time, which was, I think, pre-COVID, was about $2 million. Might have been during COVID, actually. But my proposal is that I, I don't think we need to be sitting around here because what happens with these things is we see it coming. We know that that jail, pre-COVID, that we had about 85 people in that jail. It was full for all practical purposes. And historically, we've had as many as 120 people in that jail. So we need to go ahead and, and fix the jail so that we don't have somebody in here trying to tell us later on that all of a sudden we need a new jail, we got to spend 20 or 30 million dollars, when we can spend 3 or $4 million now and get something actually accomplished. So I'm not, I'm advocating that we proceed with the study and that we, we go ahead and do that. Then that brings us back over, if you will permit me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
To the, to the need for the reg, register of deeds facilities. The register of deeds that just retired had mentioned and brought before the commissioners that she was running out of space. Well, I get into a lot of register of deeds offices, so that there, they can do a lot of things still within the space that they have, but it would be very inconvenient. And I think the people who own property in Beaufort County, transfer property, do business in there, death certificates, et cetera, et cetera, need a more convenient working space than that. So what I'm proposing, and I'm, the door is open. This is not locked into Hood Richardson. I'm trying to get a ball moving. If we build out the basement of the jail, half of that area is used by the clerk of court for storage of documents. And the other half of that basement is used by the register of deeds for storage of documents that the public needs access to. So if you build out the jail, you're going to have to vacate both of those uses. And what I would propose as a tentative proposal, again, to get the ball rolling, is that we take the register of deeds space and use it for the clerk of court, and that we build a new facility for the register of deeds. And the only logical place that I can come up with is to build it right behind us. And this lot that is behind us here is a fireproof, and I say fireproof because you're storing paper documents in there, a building for the register of deeds at that location. The, the register of deeds, wherever we put the register of deeds, they need to be within easy walking distance of the court, the clerk, and the tax office. Because all of these things come into play in dealing with registers of deeds. So I'm willing to listen to what you guys think.
Commissioner Bolts, we, we've got a jail committee meeting coming up Tuesday, August the 29th.
I think that's it.
Yeah.
But at that, we should be able to come back to you at the next commissioners' meeting with, with our recommendation. The last estimate on the, on doing out the basement was 5.7 million.
But that evolved into a Sally Port and a whole bunch of other things. I'm talking about the first estimate.
It was a Sally Port-
Yeah.
Heating and air conditioning replacement, and that was it.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
That, that Sally Port probably put a million dollars-
600,000.
On, on, on the situation.
600,000. So it's, it's a significant, significant different number than just 3,000, 3 million. The other part of it is that we have to take into consideration the other priorities that we got. We've got mega sites that have got to be funded that we're talking about. You've got additional storage for the sheriff, for his, for his retention of his evidence. So there's, there's several other things that need to go into the, into this look and not just jump to one answer. And, and by the way, the register of deeds office is about, what do we say, 4,000 square feet? And the Earl, when he priced out the, the addition to the courthouse at 6,000 square feet, it was a little over $3 million. So between the two of them, you're talking about spending $8 million. And I'll, thank you for wanting to spend money. Not usually that way, but I think we got to, we got to spend some time to look at this in more detail. And we'll give you the recommendation at the next meeting from the jail committee.
Well, I, I agree with taking some time to look at it. I think we should involve the sheriff. The last sheriff did not participate in this process at all. We need to involve the president sheriff. He seems like he's a lot more interested and active in this, this than that. So I would appreciate that.
We also, we also have potentially some restrictions on us. We've got to sort that through that and what the judges will let us do at what times in terms of construction.
Well, we can deal, we can deal with that. That's, that's not going to be a problem. I, I'm satisfied that the judges will cooperate the best they can.
They, they-
We'll cooperate the best we can with them. So that, that works, that works that way. But I would also like to point out that the reason for escrowing the $5.6 million was to, to avoid being in the position of having to give the money back to the taxpayers. So we're overtaxing people. We've been doing it for several years now. We've been piling up money. So there's not just $5.6 million there. There's actually about $30 million there. And I'm sure we can dip into that 30 million for another two and a half, even if it comes to eight, in order to make this thing work. So I'm not worried about having the money to make this work. I'm worried about the commissioners doing the right thing to, to promote law enforcement in Beaufort County and to get this drug problem under control. Because if we had more space in the jail, we would be able to confine, confine more people involved with drugs. This all helps. It all works together.
Okay.
We may need to build a whole new jail with about 500 beds.
Okay, let's don't, let's don't get into the new jail. Let's, let's switch over to Commissioner Stan DeThridge. You ready to?
He wants one.
You want to talk about your resolution?
Yeah, I will. Last month, Hood brought to the commissioners a premise for a resolution, and part of it was about election, election integrity. Whoa, excuse me. Last month, Hood Richardson brought a premise to, a res, for a resolution for election integrity. Part of it was for local discussion about sample ballots being, and looking at a certain number of sample ballots. The other part was about election integrity. I think it, the issue got conflated, and I think you commissioners got thinking about it being local versus state versus federal. And, and I think we got off on the wrong foot. So I'm, I'm bringing up a, a fresh resolution that's written, and I'm giving you guys another second attempt to bite at the apple, so to speak. But considering that the, the state of North Carolina, the general assembly in the state of North Carolina is solely responsible for our elections, when you get down to it, the constitution of the United States provides for the states to, to, to do the electing. And we are a body politic of the state of North Carolina, and so we're the first line of defense. And it's important that we pay attention, that we advocate for election integrity, and we do everything within our power. But when the state of North Carolina sees one of their 100 counties, maybe some other counties to join on, that we are very cognizant of what is going on in Raleigh, hopefully, they'll, they'll stick to their Ps and Qs. Now, I'm, I'm going to broaden my discussion of this to say this is a, this is an economic development issue. It's an economic development issue because North Carolina is one of the fastest growing states in the nation right now. And they're coming here simply because we're not so messed up. Now, not being messed up is electing people to, to serve at the local and state level and, and in our delegation up in Washington DC, and that our elections here in North Carolina be free and fair. Last 2000 election, it wasn't quite as good as it should have been. I mean, there was the Josh Stein sue settle to allow for more ballots floating around. And if you believe in election integrity, you don't believe in ballots floating around in the, in the millions. And that was a problem. Now, locally, here, our board, our Board of Elections, Kelly, Hopkins, they did a wonderful job. We, we do great in Beaufort County. We're fortunate. We, we're assured pretty much when we get elected at the local level, we don't have to worry about election integrity. But in other places, it's, it's not quite that good. So we want, if you were, if you sign on this resolution, you will be signing on that we want the people in Raleigh to know that we're concerned about election integrity now and in the future. Because everything I'm going to state in this resolution is real. It is real now. It was real 100 years ago. And it will be real 100 years from now if this republic stays intact. Okay? So I'm going to read this resolution. It's very short. I kept it short. It's a little longer than what Hood's premise to a resolution was, but I confused you guys a little bit. So I want to, I want to be specific. So I want to, I want to be specific. Resolution in defense of election integrity. Whereas in this constitutional republic, the United States of America, elections are conceived to be administered by state legislatures. Article 1, Section 4, Clause 1, and whereby Beaufort County is a body politic of the state of North Carolina, is charged with the local administration of these democratic elections for all local, state, and federal elected offices, and whereas in all recent elections since 2016, where most notably the Federal Bureau of Bureaucracy, in particular, the Department of Justice and the FBI have used their ominous offices of public power to commit election interference, to sway public opinion to elect their preferred candidates, and, and they're doing it right now, they're doing it right now, whereas a majority of the free press and big tech, social media, and search guaranteed by the First Amendment's free speech provisions is proved to have colluded with not only the FBI and Department of Justice, but also, while not limited to, the Democratic Socialist Party, their most notable politicians, and the deep state, to create and channel the elevation of their preferred speech while restricting non-preferred speech, free speech, by all means available, including political speech, that is contrary to their colluded mission, and whereas in a constitutionally mandated representative republic, it is imperative that the public have the equal opportunity to know what is true about their government and their representative political leaders, so that the most basic guaranteed freedom, the right to vote, to be fairly represented in this representative republic, is preserved now and for future generations, so they may choose wisely when voting, and whereas even in North Carolina, where Beaufort County is an integral part, election irregularities did exist across the state in the administration of the 2020 general election, therefore, be it resolved that the Beaufort County commissioners do hereby formally request that our elected representatives to the North Carolina General Assembly do all that is politically possible to ensure that all future elections be, be free and fair while conducted by the utmost integrity, and furthermore, that the North Carolina Congressional delegation do all that is within the scope of their constitutional powers to eliminate all corruption from our federal institutions within our government of this constitutional republic of we, a self-governed people.
You want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, and I make, the motion that I make is that we pass this, ratify it tonight, and we send it to, uh, members of the General's Assembly by email and to our, uh, North Carolina Congressional delegation.
Do I have a second?
You're sacking it? Oh, you said, uh-huh, I thought you were sacking it.
Do, do I have a second?
I sacking it.
Okay. Any discussion?
I've got questions. Um, you answered my question as to who gets these, and I thought it was neat the other day when we had the, um, uh, resolution to the, to the ferry tax, and we got, uh, feedback with that, with, you know, thanking us, I think, Palico County Commissioner, thanking us for, uh, helping in, Representative Keith Didwell said something to me, "Thank you for, for doing that." So if, if, if this passes and, and we send this out, do we, do we get an email as to, uh, we got response, negative, positive, whatever? I mean, I've never seen anything, do you, do you send that out like you did this? You would send that out, wouldn't you? You don't, you don't just, you know, and I knew the answer, yes, you do send that out. So please, please do send that out, I'd like to read what this, um, you know, yields, uh, when you send it out to these folks, so whether they said, you know, "Don't ever send me another resolution," or "This is very good, and, and thank you for your, you know, commitment," so I'm voting for it.
Okay. Anybody else have anything?
Yeah, uh, well, I don't, I don't stir pot too much, but, um, look, we got a two-tiered justice system here in, in the United States of America, I mean, it's pretty well-
The, the, the subject is the election integrity. Please stick to that.
Yeah, and if you, and if, listen, no, no, that is very important, let me tell you how it's important. When you do not have the Department of Justice and the FBI being fair, and that's where all investigations are conducted, unless it's done by Congress, which is a very weak place to conduct, uh, uh, investigations, you're stuck. You got two, three months at best, when you have an unfair election, to, to go to court, and you're going to lose. You're, if you have to go to court to contest an election, it's already lost. So the way you win this, and you get us on the right foot always, is to be proactive, and this is a proactive resolution to Raleigh, because they're the guys that do it in North Carolina, and, and if the guys could help at the federal level, great, but North Carolina is our number one point of attack.
Okay. All right, anybody else forward to take a vote? All those in favor of the resolution, raise your right hand. All those opposed?
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, we're going to the closed session. Katie, would you like to read us into the closed session?
Sure. A motion is either to go into closed session for economic development under North Carolina statute 143-318-11A4, to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of ministries or other businesses in the area served by the public body, including agreement on a tentative list of economic development incentives that may be offered by the public body in negotiations, or to discuss matters relating to military installation, closure, or realignment.
Okay. Entertained a motion to go into the closed session.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, raise your right hand. We're going in the back if you would like to remain in here. We, uh, need a motion to come out of closed session.
So moved.
Got a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. All those in favor of coming out of the closed session, raise your right hand. Uh, there was no action taken or needed. All right, last thing we have is comments from commissioners.
No comment.
Okay, need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you.